Those present are the board members, Mayor, Brown, Ike Satafield, Ben Ortiz, Rick Davis, and also Mandy. Hear us on our approval of our manage from our last session.
I'll make it my show with programmatic.
Unanimous.
That's unanimous, bro. Okay. Do we have any old business from?
We get over that water bill at the station down there. Right out of town.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was the, that was founded. The water did check out and all, and that is just, they'll be getting just a...
House rate.
House rate. Because all it is is a yard sale only. Number one on the agenda is Ike, myself and Ike and Bobby, discussing about OSHA. They've, they've hit four or five different counties and towns. And we've just been trying to get our area double-checked as safety and the MDSA packages in order, making sure everything. And our, all of our paperwork is up to date. They've got, they've got the monthly sign-off. Did have to replace our gas can. We had some plastic can that's a no-no. And they're ticking all the cords and stuff. You're not allowed to have plastic gas can. Had to have the lock handle that's safer, safety cans and all. And part of that old little bit of this, old business, it was about the hook-up of our new sign down there. And we was on do it Monday, but the weather didn't permit us to do it. But as soon as we catch some dry weather, we'll get that ditch done and that conduit in, we'll have our new sign up ASAP as soon as possible.
It's supposed to rain.
I know, yeah. And Ike, do you have anything that you know of that needs to be brought to the board?
Well, we talked about this morning. You're gonna hold it about the sign.
I've got to meet with him this evening. They said need to get ahold of Jared Sellers. Cause he's over on Telo side of the shop there. And see what they've got. And if it's what we got, then I have to go back and see Ike and all. But that'll be, I'm gonna get the men working.
Flagging ahead.
Yeah, flagging ahead and right. And all, but just have them as needed. We got our safety licenses and stuff ordered.
You gotta take flagging school.
Flagging school is nine o'clock Tuesday morning. David Haney is teaching the class and it's five dollars a card. And they can do it at Phillips and Jordan up here. And he, he said, just whatever you, you wanna, you feel like you wanna pay me. And I leave that up to the board. I, I kinda figured like fifty bucks, fifty dollars to pay him. He's teaching the course, interstate certified, I mean. But it's a cost about, take about an hour, hour and a half.
I said, the teacher said, thank you.
But he, and he said he would be at liberty in time when he, like for a new hire or something. He'd work it in with either Phillips and Jordan or some other outfit. He's even giving some of them to these other contractors, small contractors that has to do flagging and stuff.
And that's for all our men, right?
That's for every one of our men.
He, he got certified members.
Yeah, everybody needs to go and somebody's out.
Yeah, see, and I'm gonna wait and go get it.
They wear their reflector vests, don't they, every time they're out working or anything?
They hadn't been, but we're doing it.
Yeah, and I ordered vests. I've got vests.
Well, they're supposed to wear...
Got to have the vests, orange vests.
Not caps, but what is it, flagging it? They supposed to wear them?
Hard hats.
Cornwood area.
Cornwood area, anything.
Okay, not on the garbage truck, okay. I just wanna make...
Just have to have, need gloves.
Make sure they wear those vests.
Yeah, I, I, they, they started this morning. They had been wearing them.
Yeah, they had been, cause I seen them. I know, you just forget. But I know they've been wearing them, cause I've seen them wear them.
They're gonna dump garbage truck, they're wearing them, right?
Yeah. They're supposed to, anytime they're out, public or for...
Meeting's approved, jammed.
I told them too.
Made the most of all.
Right now, we don't got enough. I reckon Steve orders some. Even like more outriding meter. All of them need to wear them across the road.
And one of the main things is you need to be, if you've got to get out your vehicle, your vehicle needs to be in the lane of travel, not going the wrong way. And all, that's one of the things. And they're having their tailgate safety meetings too, and they're signing off on that too. So we're just trying to get all bases touched and they're timed up.
We've been working on them trailers. Didn't have any light on time signal.
Oh goodness.
We're working on them.
Getting them, oh good.
And all the flashing lights and everything.
It's too good, the maintenance is, it's real good.
Law suit.
Yeah. We got the best crew, I think. Maintenance crew.
And that's all I had for Ike.
Does anybody got, do they have to take shots? Don't they have to take shots?
Well, everybody has to have a hepatitis. That's on you hire. They, Mandy, Mandy kinda has that whenever they're hired.
Michaels, that is everybody.
Yeah.
He's, he's...
He's in process.
He's had his life shot. He's either had it or...
Yeah, one time, so he hasn't had it, I think. If I went up there, you know, and see it one time.
Is there anything else Jen think bring before Ike? Thank you, Ike.
Alright.
Appreciate you.
Next on the agenda is Brendan, Rick Davis running the field plan.
Come on, Rick. Um, you can sit right up here. In front here.
I stood down at the bottom under other islands. The name wasn't come back was to discuss the resolution. But Wayne Carringer has a flagpole and we've got many. We need to buy a couple more trees at least and dedicate them to some people. And Bobby, is our benches and the planters still down at the nail?
Yes.
Well, what would Jen think about doing a little memory garden? You know, there's a curve in there right in front of Ingles. Right there at 143, maybe putting that flagpole there or down with the new sign that Jen's have got on the north end of town. But anyway, right there in front of Ingles, I've got some hemp that's gonna help me replant that and do knockout roses. Could we put those benches in there? They'd be looking over at Ingles.
I don't see why not, do you Bobby?
They'll tell us.
Or do you see that?
Yeah. With actually, I'd probably have to go back and do another little plan and get approval for where they are. So, but I'll do that and maybe a couple of dogwoods and...
I think it'd be pretty.
Okay, well, a little quiet place to sit, okay.
I know, it's just, yeah, cause you were selling down there, right? That's our annual place, right there with that bench.
Right.
And they, I know they're selling them too. I see people buying.
Well, we need those benches all over the place, all over town. Okay, and we've got some plaques that need to be, be put on some benches. But I'll need some your help for that.
Okay.
That's where they've been paid for and everything, so, okay. And of course, I just need, I've got one, no care about lens place. But I'm just talking with them about that, cause I'd like to take the school kids and do a mosaic or mural over there on that walk. Would they get? But Jen's need to make a motion or anything about that flagpole.
Well, on this memory garden, there's gonna be a memory of...
Well, that would be, I think it would be in memory. We'll have two benches there that'll have plaques on them.
What do they gonna say?
In memory of certain people. Cause people donated money to buy the benches. But could we not call it the Town of Robbinsville Memory Garden? And if anybody wanted to buy a bench or put a tree, we could do that whole circle in there. What do you think?
They could buy a tree and we could put a plaque there.
Yeah.
Like you see them, you know.
Yeah, and those little plaques can just fit at the base of those trees. It'd be a second row in behind or in between, I put grave murals. Nothing no bigger than a dogwood.
I think it'd be good myself.
Jim Lescott, man, the doors, man?
Well, now...
I was, no, I was talking just solely out one person.
You're right.
Then Bobby can't, we can't, we can't do nothing for one person.
Right.
Get into it over a bridge one time, wanted to name a bridge after one person.
Oh, I understand that. But we've got...
Like you say, people have to pay money for that.
Now, what about, what about, so you're talking about this, is it on, is it on the...
Rick's right, as you come into 143 and 129. And over here, you know, says Ingles. It's that little wide spot right in that curve there. Maybe putting...
On Ingles side?
Yes.
On Ingles side, okay.
That's, we've got that other side there.
Well, reason being, I've got this from Wesley Grand Staff. Uh, this sign memorial plaque thing is gonna be going in.
Cherokee, yes.
Cherokee. And that's the dimensions and everything. And it is gonna be erected down there. But just, just to have that right there, I mean, it had, we court document and stuff, I mean...
We had to do that.
And about seven different signatures has to go on. And it was at a total bed steal till I got that woman up there and Wesley connected.
Right.
And a ten-minute conversation ended probably fifteen meetings. Had already been trying to get it set up.
Well, they didn't go, we had to do the same thing, Mr. Mayor, when we did those benches and everything down there. But they didn't seem to know how to get connected. And that's when I handed it over to you.
Yeah, and also...
They'll go in that garden, will it, or they'll go in that...
No, really go over on the other side. Yes.
And the, one thing that has have two, we've had two or three mishaps with little islands going down through there. And everybody saying, well, that's a town, but it's states. Because the state has erected signs up there.
Yeah, that looks good now since they put their signs up.
Yeah, and which Wesley told me, they had a year to do that, you know, to see because they didn't know. And the signs is up and that's state property, the only thing. The Town of Robbinsville, grade or whoever, we will have some manpower planting, planting. Disrupt or whatever and all.
It's a wheelchair ramp through there too. People don't realize that that helps.
Well, you're gonna have some people that comply.
And no matter what.
And...
It's true.
But I think you'll find we'll have less...
They can't see that, my God.
And...
I need to get licenses, but can't see that pile in there.
My wife hit that, I'm not with that.
I'm sitting over there.
Ain't that a lot of people hit them, it's been... It's run over.
Whenever that boy, that woman, that woman.
She comes through there flying, now I'm sitting there washing her.
Ronnie Millsaf can drive between that.
Yeah.
I have a heading problem. But I think we will have a problem with our plants because the exhaust schemes and...
It's hard to get it grow.
And the concrete's definitely leaching. So we're gonna have to find something that will grow.
That's the only thing I know of.
If it had a view on it, you went up more three feet, such a short distance, it has to be that low.
But you could talk to every bus driver down there that drives a bus, has to drop a child off somewhere on that bypass. They tell you that it is more safe right now than it's been ever since they've been driving it, third stop and letting kids off. Because it needs a lot of the...
It doesn't, it doesn't trick about head on traffic, getting over in that lane.
Well, my daughter Denise drives a little four-square bus. And she said on a regular basis, and they have reported it to the police, that somebody would pass that bus on that bypass. To me, that's worth the decision that was made to do that. Well, I'd like to get it planted with something a little more colorful this summer, but we'll just have to say what my... Well, and let's say Bobby, you'll have to help me with that flagpole and those benches when it gets warmer. It's a huge big tall flagpole.
It's not as big as the one that was up here from Corley House. It's like one he had down there at his house there for a while. It's about twenty-five, thirty foot tall.
Tiny tall.
That needs to be a property owner if it's far enough back, or that has to be a state.
It'll be engineered.
Engineered. Cause it could fall over.
Now, if it was for Bobby, we wouldn't have...
Yeah, this was on county property, was gonna put one on top of the hill. And we couldn't because it was a public, whatever. But they, we had to have an engineer or two engineer the footer for the flagpole. It'd work if it's gonna be, be public. But we could get the gills, we could get Mike, one of them to do it.
They're awful good, they're awful good about stuff like that.
Yeah, they, they want the engineer that and force up there to be backed out of them.
What's his land base, mosaic or mural?
I'm wanting to work with Ms. Carringer at school and just to let you know, to see if we can. There's some money that we can possibly get to do that type of thing. And I had met with Ms. Carringer at a great meeting a while back and hoping we can get some of her school kids. And I wouldn't start that till this fall when school started. But just to keep you aware of that, I think that I would like to do something that looks Cherokee if Billy and Lynn...
Yeah, I'll see what they think.
Okay.
How about it? Put political signs on your islands down there?
I'm staying out of this. Nobody's grace supposed to do something like, even though I'm veteran, of course.
Keep that camera buck here.
You're in trouble.
Just a joke.
Put them in there.
Now, back to the main thing. Do you have any questions about this resolution? And the reason I ask that, to get some funding to do this planning, a proposal has to be in by the end of the month. And...
Have you got the connectivity plan? Cause we could look over for a little bit.
Here's, here's... Now, I've got, I've got crazy, crazy thing, I'm working.
Let me tell you, there's gonna be some things in there that's probably...
There's probably the map that could be more concerned. And I made a thought, notice that those two big circles on that map, those are areas where a decision's gonna have to be made by somebody, you know, that walked that. So there's nothing inconclusive about any type of driveway path or anything like that. There's some suggestive routes. And that's where you would have to make those decisions, you've been paying counsel. You know, you could, you could connect the high school and Stanley now. You know? So those, those route options right there, Don Costalec who put this map together, realized at some point in time they would have to make some decisions to make that walk that you want. And really, when you, when you think about it, you're looking at something here that's a long range plan. You know, this is ten to fifteen to twenty years, if you were to take all of it. The one thing that I think is the most important part of this plan is the health impact assessment. And that's dealing with issues like obesity and diabetes and that sort of stuff, especially with our school and its children. And what impact a path, a pedestrian path, wherever it might be, could impact them. And I'm sure you're aware that presently, the school system is working with Equinox Environmental on the six hundred fifteen-foot long path along Sweetwater Creek that ties into the existing track. As far as I know, that's the only design that's going on right now. That's what school property, unless y'all have got something.
Rick, one of the first questions I have run into is on property owner. Is this gonna be like the chip or the pea gravel? It's not gonna be pavement or concrete?
The only thing that I...
That, you know, I've had the first thing because they said, you know, they don't want to put their property, having it being used as, you know, for concrete in case that their land's over, whatever, turning and messing up either end.
I can't really address it. Because it's not, it's not into the design phase yet.
That's what...
The only part that's in the design phase at this point in time is the component that's... So the goal there on the school property would for it, would that it be paved.
Right.
That would fit into the...
But that's already there.
But what happens in the future, I don't know. Because that's the only, as I said, that's the only component that's designed.
Sidewalk on Fourth Street.
No, I know this here was, if it was, if it was back, you know, like had been discussed, the path down here and the sidewalk here, you know, had, you know, for a riding path or a bicycle. They didn't want like a...
The bike path paved.
Right.
Yeah, I could understand that. You know, and I think maybe the horses before the car, the cart, the horse ever quite the... That you done get into the design phase and then that's when you put everybody in and say, this is what we'd really like to have and work with a design group like work, like the school was working with at the, at the high school right now.
That's at the end of your step.
So, so until you get that point.
And I've found people...
On this, you know, people need to know once we adopt it. I mean, he...
This is not...
They know preliminary and say it does pass in the future. Whether you use cotton balls or hassle, it don't matter. Once it's adopted and it's approved. And if you do say you're appropriate, it don't matter. That, that bike path will stay or that walking path will stay. Even if it is on you, it don't matter.
They'll protect it.
It's, it's just like an advertisement for a sewer line or...
Right.
You know, people don't understand, once you let anybody use that for that purpose, whether it's a long-range plan, if it is, ever is adopted, on down the road, your grandchildren needed the property for something. If it's gonna sell, it, they would have to sign that over too. So that, that's the part that's got, let's don't go too fast till we've talked to everybody. I think we've got about everybody spoke to. We need to have some input of people, especially the circle parts that's gonna talk.
That's where...
If we stay in the road, we'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, we, we'd be more, you're more accessible with the sidewalk.
Well, the sidewalk is owned by the town.
Town.
No, to, to the curb. On all of the streets, except town streets, we're on the curb and the same.
But Bobby, that, these things can be decided during that planning and design phases. Yeah, yes.
That, that's right, but that's what I'm saying, let's, let's don't throw a bunch of time in something that we know that ain't gonna go. Let's get a path that will go and go, go head on that and get it done. Let's don't go across Jimmy Collins and Tracy Garland and those folks with a plan that we know that ain't gonna work, they don't want it.
Well, the thing that everybody needs to be, it's like Jen's have been at the table through all of this improvements time. And of course, I've called Theresa and Sue Millsaps and the Collinses and everybody, most everybody, I'd say ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the people are for this planning. But there's a few that have concerns, but that's where you need to bait the wild which you are, that an alternate bridge or something's done that could make this happen and, and to where we don't get in a problem with people. If they just want a sidewalk and don't want a biking path, we might could work that out. But that has to be done during the planning and the design. Cause we can't do anything right now because we don't even have people here that can tell us what we can do. DFT's not here, designers aren't here.
If I could just make one comment, you know, this plan here has nothing to say... This is a ten, fifteen-year...
Suggestion, look at.
Suggesting ideas, it's kinda like a blueprint when you're building a house and you see something that you wanna change, do it. If you adopt this, doesn't mean that you're adopting any particular route or anything like that. What you're adopting is a framework.
A framework.
For connectivity. It's Town of Robbinsville, that's how you do it.
And like, this is an idea that might be good for us. Let's proceed a little further slowly, see what we can do, who else we can get on board and so forth. Because this thing, y'all, and I think I've said this to you once before, you're still in control.
No, no, the people are still in control.
Yeah.
We work for them.
And I'll tell you right now, I will not put my name on this
until I get everyone their landowners to say, yes, I want you to adopt that.
I don't know.
And that, that's my thing.
Yeah.
That's my thing. Now, if we can stay off of them, I don't want a bicycle path, I don't want everybody in...
Well, I think it's been suggested that...
That's what they want, that's what they tell me they want.
Well, I'd give them my land, but I would...
We'll take it. We'll take it. Yeah, we'll take it, we'll take it. We're gonna want me to.
I'll get it good enough.
I don't care to be the one that, you know, I've, I've, I've done all four street and helped all of them. But what they eat want is something that's gonna be set, that's gonna be on their property from now on, that they can't get rid of. That's what they don't want, that's what they're telling me.
That was what was said in front of Mandy and Sherry yesterday.
They killing us, I mean.
One, one person.
But I'll, I'll tell you why.
One person that said that his family and that pit right there, if it was for just like a pathway or, you know, foot wall or, uh, five or six foot wide for the bike path or whatever, as long as they didn't have to sign nothing, and he sold that to Walmart tomorrow to build there, and their parking area and everything took up that, it would have no ties to, it had, you know, it wasn't cause that the market, i- it's on the market. And they, and, and, and I mean, you know.
We had to set funds in alternate routes.
We gotta get them comfortable with it before we can say, let's do it.
And I, I mean, I've, I've went and, I've, I've went and spoke to three different things in this area and all good, go ahead and come on across, but now this is, I don't want this, I'm not gonna sign, we will not sign for a, a right of way. But you can use it as such.
I wonder if that's even needed, Steve, as long, if what if we just use the sidewalk here again?
That's what I.
I, 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 I think it, the, the sidewalk is your best fix-all and, and, and be done with. I mean, but that, but because I mean, you, you, you're, you're, you're.
That'll go to them, they can have a make.
What we need to be working with is on the town streets, we can do a bicycle.
Yeah, we do.
Well, Bobby, now.
We could do that for, for a bike path.
Okay, so we could make an alternative route on which town streets? Well, I'm getting something.
Yeah, which, which one is gonna?
You're really not there yet.
Yeah.
I know, I, I, I mean, this is.
To a planning stage to do something and just, that's, and we can't do that to you.
I say any town.
You could connect, you could connect now probably with existing sidewalks and roads. You know, without doing a whole lot of work.
Right.
You'd have to do some upgrades.
Oh, yes. And, and, and getting them to the minimum, minimum width and stuff.
Let's do D O T on a bicycle.
Right.
They had to put one in.
Mm-hmm.
They, they got, they had to put the crowd in and uncheck them. The, the little roads that we own would not be that bad to put anything. And we can't use the sidewalk for a bicycle path.
And they had a big wad of money this past year for, if it would've been ready, we could.
Two point six million dollars was spent western counties on bicycle paths.
Well, that's part of this safe routes.
We couldn't put in, we couldn't put in for the cost. We didn't have, well, we didn't, we didn't have no curb, curb on town streets that the D O T own. We own it, I said, we should've given it to them when they done their sidewalks. They gave us, the D O T's smart, they gave the town the sidewalks, but they should've never took. It's just, no, we don't want them, if you wanna put sidewalks in, put them in, let y'all keep them up. It's hardship on little town that don't have a tax base to keep sidewalks. We ain't got enough money to pack sidewalks.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Now, they don't want them back.
It's like, if you do this safe routes to school program, then you can do circle street, I don't think there's that many children out there. Then proximity, we, we could check it, cause that's where the surplus of funds is now. You could get your dewatering done on Ford Street. You, do you already have a pipe going into, uh, Chioa or Long Creek?
We've got, we've got a, we've got a sixty inch pipe going into Long Creek and, and we have one going into, or into Chioa.
Chioa.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got a thirty inch pipe going into Long Creek on the other side. But getting enough money to finish it out is what, we're, we're looking at about a million and some dollars to.
Like from Ford Street to which?
From, yeah, from, from Michael Tail to Lard.
Okay.
That's what we've got, we've got sixty inches worth, and it don't matter if we do three twenty inch pipe.
Well, see Bobby, that's.
Have that volume.
What I was hoping to, and I had talked with the person at Equinox, for this to be done in a way with that in mind and keep working toward that. Cause that's gonna be, like you say, an expensive job and a long ways for me. But that was what I was hoping to do with what we've got started here. Uh, work on that as fast as we can to get our whole town dewatered.
Well, we, we need to go back to Brookwood, Brookville.
Yeah.
We have now, you know, any drainage we can put into the river, any water we can put into the river. Yeah, it was an asset too, Dean.
Mm-hmm.
That's how we got the first one. Alcoa and Alcoa. And nobody's, nobody's reached out to Brookwood and asked, uh, about the drains. But I'm sure that they, you know, when, when, when Alcoa and, and when they bailed out on us, just went to county council.
Well, that wasn't the town.
It wasn't, but that's when talks start, I mean, during that time and, and we, we need to go back with them and see if they can assist us and.
Myra Hare, it's a lady, it's a lady that, uh, I got.
I don't know Rick knows.
Yeah, I do.
And, and, uh, she, she was up here last week. And, uh, and, uh.
Did you talk with her about this?
Well, she was having other stuff going on.
Okay.
And, uh, but, uh, I, I did talk with her about fifteen, twenty minutes. And, uh, she gave me her phone number and also her email address, you know, so I'm gonna be in contact with her.
She's a real nice person.
Get her to come over and take her out to eat lunch or something and discuss it.
Well, Rick, I thought that's where with Greg.
Myra actually will be at the next, right, me and Mark's between it, so you know, you might.
Be there, we can get together and talk with her.
Yeah, that'd be a couple of conversations.
They seem to be pretty impressed, uh, with Greg and she was really kept mad with that planning session.
Your local contacts or maybe Ellen's or Brett Weems.
Brett, yeah. Well, I was talking with Lindy, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sure me, you know, any major decisions, Myra would have to be in there.
All right, yeah, he, he said she's, and, and, and she's not called public relations. She is a compliance specialist.
Okay.
Super good, super good, so, so, you know, we have to have permit to, to hook on with that sixty inch path. They have to prove it to her.
To, yeah.
We can't just hook on to it. Basically, any drainage in Graham County belongs to me, they, they own it.
One of, one of the issues that ever who continues with his project down or Ringo, whoever your grant buyer is, the issue that they're gonna run into when they go with funding is, number one, do you have a plan? And then, number two, yeah, we have a plan. Number two, has that pa- has that plan been adopted by your councilor government? And until you can say yes to both of those, you're not gonna do too much for you. You're not gonna be able to get big bucks. Uh, it's, it's real critical if you want to, to access some region A money right now. There's a grant deadline that's coming up and the potential there, you'd probably have to ten to twenty thousand dollars. And the diabetes condition money could match that, that's a thirty percent match. So it's real critical if you're gonna do something with that, those funds, that it's, needs to happen really, really soon.
Yeah, it can't, we can't wait.
If you're not going to, then great, we'll write another one for the ta- for the school property to continue with that. So, you know, that's what you have on the table right now, and that's your decision.
Well, did y'all see my email where Philip Moore wrote back? If it wasn't approved, that we probably wouldn't get two more projects besides Ford Street down by D O T, one going up to Littlewood and one going out toward Miss Branch. That's important that those resolutions be adopted and what Rick's saying. Another thing with this too is the Marshall University of this twenty thousand.
Got the names of that?
Philip Moore over at the Southwestern Commission, you know Philip.
Yeah, there's an email he, he.
Yeah, I, do you want me to send it out again to you?
If you want to.
Okay, well, that's.
You know what project up to other than that?
He decided that, I think, I thought it must be Joining Town that I'd get enough for sure.
That sewer.
Probably, I don't know, now, I'm not safe, Steve, I don't know.
Philip Moore, D O T don't think so, we don't really need to run it up there.
Well, I don't think they have anything.
Surely not.
No.
We don't have any.
Some project we got.
It's D O T, you know, projects are put in line.
Yeah.
And, but they're being funded and done is contingent upon the adoption of this plan. You know, that's what we've been heading toward. And D O T has just been easing around with us like a paving the bypass to we could get a transportation plan and plans like this in place.
Well, you had your one twenty nine street you gave up.
Yes, we, that, that helped to get that.
That's what that was.
And, and to the, and I'm not a committee of the Southwestern.
Yes, you are.
And what we've turned in is forty percent of the state's decision, completely. And since we didn't have this last year, we couldn't put in for a penny.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you say, yes. Well, and there's still money out there, there's a surplus in that safe routes to school, but that comes through D O T.
Right.
But what you could put in with, there was no transportation plan, right? It's transportation plan.
But these plans all work together, Bobby.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, but it was a transportation plan, that's why we, we're not eligible for it.
This would just be put in as a transportation plan. They're doing a transportation plan for us in Cherokee County right now.
Yes.
I don't know where it's at, I don't know if it's finished or.
It is not finished, there's another million that can be eliminated, I think, change. But.
About, well, what do you think? Do you wanna take a vote on it, see where you're at?
I don't see anything.
I don't either, I think we already go ahead.
No, I'm not a motion of adopting this preliminary.
I say.
I say no.
But, Ted, what?
Well, I think, well.
Let's see how much money we can get anyway, see what we can do.
Well.
And I'm not a committee, I couldn't get, I mean, I couldn't, they said you can't join that now.
I know, and this would make you feel bad.
Where'd you start the money after?
That, that we can't take advantage of.
All right, let me know if I can help you, anyone.
Appreciate it.
You grab the right.
Thanks so much.
I'm sorry, Bobby.
Oh, oh, no, I know.
That's why they call it good.
But thank you so much, I love you for everything you do for the community.
I'm gonna say you, Brandon.
All right, I'll get started.
All right, what's next?
All right, go ahead, we'll, we'll just skip down to number six, maybe. Go ahead, come on over and. This year's on, uh, William St. Brown's water bill.
I do not know where to start. Um, back in July, I was working with y'all three before Steve come in on my water. I talked to Bobby several times and I talked to Jackie several times. Bobby had told me, well, they both had told me not to worry about the installation or the deposit, that they would handle it. Okay, now.
That didn't mean you didn't have to pay for it.
You got to pay it.
You have to pay it.
Yeah.
Well.
What we done is set it up in payments.
I was under the assumption that not to worry about it meant they would take care of it. That it would, you know, just pay my water bill is what I was told.
No, that don't work, no.
Well, that's how I, I, I took it. Okay, um.
No, no, she doesn't do that, and I, I wouldn't know at the time that there was a back balance and that was supposed to have been paid before.
I had told y'all that he had an existing balance, I told y'all both. And y'all said, y'all would see what y'all could do, it's on, I'm wanting to keep it on, I'm doing what I can with what I've got. Um, I had lost my job, I'm trying to get it back, trying to get, I'm trying to get work, I mean, it's hard to come back. Um, we have bills from two thousand and eight where it was twenty dollars and he had none that was owed then, the page is twenty dollars. I've got the stuff, the receipts in here where he had, we had, he had noted. On this printout we had, it was in a negative a hundred and fifty dollars. These receipts don't match what is on the computer. I'm not understanding why it's not.
Sherry?
I've got it.
Uh, but, uh, the day before yesterday, when you was up here and, and she sat down, you, you said that, uh, you've understood now.
Yeah.
The paper was, and also on your eighty dollar, uh, your eighty, that, that eighty dollars you was talking about.
Why don't you be on that?
You never, you never, y'all never paid that bill. The church paid it, sent a ninety dollar check in here and it paid the, it, it paid the, it, no, 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 listen, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it. The, the church sent a ninety dollar check in here and they paid the eighty and Sherry said, well, they, they wrote a ninety dollar check for some reason. And they added, they subtracted the ten dollars.
She's got it right here, Sherry.
Out of the bill. So, so, so that, my tire is done, took care of, of that church.
Cause it had to be paid that day or it was gonna get turned off. That's why I did that, that's why I called the church. I'm working with the church now to get your three hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty one cents according to this.
What is that?
How does?
Current bill?
Yes, how does it go up from starting out past due was a hundred and seventy four, seventy four and end up almost three hundred dollars three months later? I get where you're coming from, but it should go down, not up. If we're paying a monthly bill.
It adds on to it.
Interest is not but three, twenty nine and four and a quarter. How does it go up almost three hundred dollars?
Have you got, have you got that printout that we have, that agreement that I signed?
Okay, right here.
That's where it went up.
One seventy four, forty seven.
There you go.
Okay, and then this one says two eighty, three fifty, hold on, this one says two nineteen forty seven. And then this month is two eighty, three fifty one. How in the world?
You're still paying on your past due.
I'm trying, I mean, I'm doing what I can, but I'm paying my bill as well. I don't really understand the three hundred dollars.
But what bill did you pay?
I'm paying my monthly bill and, you know, ten dollars, what I can extra, like you said, when we talked.
That's what we said, it was twenty five dollars.
Twenty five dollars.
Right.
That goes on that.
But I'm doing what I can. I mean, I mean, I feel like as long as I pay my monthly bill, I'm doing what I can without a job. He's not working, it's, I mean, I've got insurance, I've got this, I've got everything else to worry with and I'm doing all I can do.
Well, we, we, we know, and that's why we.
And I don't want, I don't want phone calls saying that you're gonna turn my water off if I don't pay such and such extra.
To begin with, we've not, we've not called you, told you we're gonna cut your water.
You told me if I did not pay.
You called me, I'm not called you.
Yes, and I understand that, and you told me as well, if it is not paid by the twenty eighth, you're jerking my meat.
No, I said we, we would cut it out, we would have to cut it off.
And I understand that, but considering the circumstances.
What much does she owe right now?
None, I'm up to date.
You're, you're up to date on everything but the past due?
Yes, up to date.
And what's your problem?
The problem is, you know, three hundred and forty eight, fifty one, it, it, there's no possible understanding of why it goes up from a hundred and seventy four.
When we, you remember when you sat over with me, we went over, I thought you was kinda clear on that when you laid up, was you not?
I am, but at the same time, there's no way interest eats you up. I am, but at the same time, there's no way interest eats you up.
Well, not interest, not, not totally all interest, it's a water consumption too.
Yeah, you're still using.
See, what, what, whether you use one gallon or two thousand gallons, you don't be, you don't be charged that, at one flat rate. If you use over the two thousand, it's not be add extra to the standard bill, right?
I get that, but we've not went over the overage, so there's no reasonable explanation for the three hundred dollars. I get the fifty-five dollars, I get it, but three hundred dollars, well, I mean, starting out at a hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Wait, let Cherry say, what Cherry, do you wanna, you wanna step back in here and we'll go in front of the computer like we did yesterday?
I understand that, but there's, I, I'm not.
Okay, you know, that right there that I printed on for you, that, that shows everything that like is totaling on your bill, that show, that total there is everything that'll show on that printout.
Oh, it should be.
Right.
And, and, you know, we looked at the fifty-five dollar, you said you understood that, that was adding to the bill. But we can go in there and look at it again and I'll follow through each month with you, what was the balance beforehand, if we's got the water, the old bill that was owed, okay?
Which was a hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay, and then we can go from there, each bill came out and what was paid and we'll look at it and, and if you don't understand the balance side, then we'll look at it again until we're both on the same page.
Oh, I mean, I'm, 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 I get what you're saying, I, I do, but, um, some of it's where's, where's, where's the money? I mean, a hundred and seventy-four dollars and I keep paying on my bill, it shouldn't go up, if you have a loan with the bank and you pay your monthly bill, it don't go up.
That's, 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 that only set money you.
I get that, but I'm paying my, my monthly, so it shouldn't go up, my water bill shouldn't go up if I'm paying my, my sixty, seventy-four, it shouldn't.
Let her walk you through that again and show you.
Just let her look at it right, please, okay, you won't tell you this, just let her look at it and if you don't understand, we'll, we'll get to where that we, we're seeing okay, all right? All right, quit it, let's go look at it. Don't even want that to exist.
Okay, uh, Town County has a contract, uh, this here was for, they was gonna have to go to Asheville for a little conference thing on, on that, the county and the town on, uh.
Is that disaster relief? Disaster relief with Larry Embry? That the fire tree shot?
This year.
When is that?
Yeah, that's it.
Who's it going?
Yeah, I think.
Well.
I don't know.
I don't know what, what is it for, what's it for, I mean.
Well, Bobby, there's like about, I think there's like four hundred, close to five hundred thousand dollars in that fund. And the only two, there's three counties that haven't got any money, I live in, that's Grand County, Cherokee County and one other county on that, that five, it's about five hundred thousand dollars. It's over four hundred thousand dollars for bicycles and stuff and they said that we've getting even more profit since we didn't have a plant.
That's on, that's on D O T road, Jackie, that ain't on the town road, and it don't put out a truck.
No, but, no, around, no, but it'd be town, you could use it on this, I mean, we couldn't put in for one dollar at the time, they said we couldn't.
That's fine, we don't need it, on my part, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not for it, it never will be for it until they get these landlords approval.
Well, yeah, they ain't, we ain't, but that's not what I don't want.
Yeah, but I wouldn't adopt that resolution, my buddy, no.
We haven't have a plan though, to see.
Yeah, they still don't have a plan.
No.
No.
They, they still don't have a plan.
But we had to have that before we could even go ask for money, if we go ask, see, we got three hundred thousand dollars, we could.
You won't get any money for this plan approval, they, they'll get some money to probably study it and some money to go out there and look at.
That's right.
But, you know, it's just throw it away unless, unless you adopt that plan to, to put in on this private.
We can't do that.
We can't, I just.
They can't put it down the road, it'll have to go on the road.
I see, we'll have to wait, see if he's our plan.
That, now, that right there is the county.
Yeah, this, this is the agreement.
We're not gonna put anything on anybody, don't we?
Yeah, this, this, no, no.
You're the best for the doubt, now, I'm seeing what's.
They can study the road all they want to.
That's right.
I mean, and, and we ain't done nothing, you know, give them permission to look, money to study.
That's how we do it.
But it's just wasting money on something that ain't gonna happen, on, on.
Well, if they follow the road, they can do it.
If they follow the road, they can do it.
That's the only way it'll go through, man, nobody out there gonna let them come over, I ain't gonna let them come over me.
Yeah, this, this is the agreement between the town and the county to take the septic, septic and trucks.
I thought we said we're not going to.
We're, we're not going.
No, we don't need to do that.
I mean, we was gonna take them in our new.
Uh, how?
New site down there, but.
How, do I need to go tell them we are not going or, or do we need to beat his board and?
No, just go tell them, you know, run, run that station out there, that we're not gonna say.
Okay.
We got a grant for it, they got a grant for it and the town got a grant for it.
One thing.
They wanted it on them, now they got to run it.
Yeah, one thing.
Went, went nine years, not running.
That's right, and so I went to that meeting down there, I said, that town, I said, they said, oh, it don't work, I said, oh, yeah, it does, it's back truck, I'm saying, can involve, put ten thousand gallons through it.
Now, we, we were gonna take it at one time, the lot they driving down there, like when we tried it, it, it.
Yes, uh, that it was, it, it, uh, what they, what was dumped, we, we just used a, like I said, we just used a assimilated dump from Porton. And in this dump as a study to see how it would work, you don't know what you're getting, you're taking out of the ground or out of the duty john or from the forest service, there was a, a horse rag and, and a pair of underwear that got called up in our conveyor belt that feeds, uh, and if it had got into that screen up there in our filters, it would've shut down our headworks. That's why the county has got, and the town went in with them and they've got a grinder out there. And if you send something to the grinder, you know, it, it, it's broke down and you can handle stuff like that right there.
That's what it's set up for.
And that's what it's set up for and the county needs to go ahead and let them go in there. Cause number one, there's no septic tanks in the city limits around here. Uh, this stuff's coming from septic tanks and the, the, the forest service, uh, g, portage ons and stuff. Uh, and all, and, uh, we just can't afford to tie our headwork stuff up, right? If it runs through that grinder and everything gets through the, through there, it's fine whenever it comes and hits us and, and goes, it's fine, we, yeah.
Well, little boss Chris told me that, uh, uh, he's having to take it all the way to.
Right, Frank, I found that, I just want to have take it, because so you can't take it to Andrews or you can't take it to Murphy or what, what kind of Grand County state?
My understanding, the town and county got a grant, both of them, the county wanted it on them and they got it.
Yeah. Well, we, well, I was on the board who went into that agreement with them and the reason we went for that grant is we were getting so much stuff into the man hole back then that was stopping, burning up, what, thirty thousand dollars worth of pumps one year.
With them grinders.
Because we didn't have a grant.
It's got a bar screen in front of it that gets it before it goes to their grinders. And we have a bar screen in front of ours, but we have brushes that clean their bar screen, but when they dump that stuff, if it's got that in it, it'll get in our brushes.
Brushes and.
That's plant down, uh, I mean, we could still take it, don't go get me wrong, we'd have to have somebody that'll with it when it's dumped, we could still take it and they have to pick it out the screen.
They have to.
Yeah, but we're not getting.
And we've not, we've not got the manpower to man that on Saturdays whenever they want to dump or a Sunday, I, I seen them wanting to dump on Sundays too, ain't you, Bobby?
We're catching all the slack for it being shut down.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting the black eye whenever.
I mean, the town didn't shut that down.
They've got the connection out there, they can start running it right now.
We shut our plant down when the old plant would not, not take that and we, you know, when the state coming on it and we closed it. We're the one that got them permission to go to Fontana was the town, I mean, that's when we told them, you know, these folks gonna have hardship. So Chuck Cracker with Deaner helped with Fontana, said we all take it, so they waived their permits, it ain't, you're supposed to go to, to Grand County plantation.
That, that agreement, what you got to.
There's no agreement with them, you know, we, we, we did tell them we would take, we verbally told them we would take. But we, we've not, we can't even get help to put gravel down there where they can get their trucks in, the town's not responsible for septic tanks on all this creek, you live on all this creek, no, I'm joking. I mean, you know, we, we'll take it, we need to help everybody in the county, uh, to have them a place, furnish them a place, two, get rid of their septic outside the city limits. We don't have any septic tanks here inside the city limit. That's a whole different dog of waste when you start taking a septic tank, there's no breakdown in it, it's a hundred percent and it's a culture shock when it comes to it. So what that unit was built for out there is to aerate, break it down, kill some of that, kill some of the bad bugs and then come down.
To a mile, mile height of the road and it's.
Blends in with the other sewage and stuff and murders it down a lot, don't it? And, and because if it pours straight in there, it kills off the bacteria.
But I, I think for the septic tank holders in, 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 in a hole, it'll be better on them to have a, a, have a place. At any time, if we get a high reading, we're gonna shut it down, if we get a high reading at our plant down there, we're, that's the first thing we're gonna shut down. Cause there's no irrigation up there, it's that, you know, it has to come to our plant to be treated, so it could really kill that whole tank.
Big time.
The bacteria and stuff, yeah.
But now, now, this, this one out here aerates it and, and like you said, gives you the mixing time to get to the headworks, it, it all ends up there either. But it's strained up there, all the big stuff's picked out of it and we just get the.
It's watered down, watered down and the other sewage.
That thing is aggravating you after, you have to do it by hand.
And, and, and it's, it's a service to the.
The county.
To go to county, right.
I don't see why they should have to.
And, 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 and they, they, they charge a rate, I think we're getting six cents and they're getting two, right?
We, we get, I don't know exactly what it is.
I think it's like, it's six and seven. It's eight cents total of a gallon.
To treat.
And, and to treat and we're getting six and they're getting two.
Now, we could, we could eat a little of that cost if you wanted to, to help them out, I mean, that's up to y'all.
I don't see, if they got one out there, why do they need ours?
I mean, this.
Well, at the end of the day, we get it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, either way.
At the end of the day, the, the town ends up with it, uh, at, at seven cents a gallon, we're breaking about even with tree, with this new plant, with the. We could probably, we could probably cut them a little bit on it, it's, the, the treatment process is so much better. It's not, it's not near as hot for.
But will that, will it not affect our bacteria and stuff that comes in there?
Not now, it won't, I mean, it, it won't now.
Yeah, it's true, it's.
You know, it's. It's aerated out there, air is really the key to it, air, and that thing is aerated and it wouldn't hurt it to go through our headworks. We're still gonna get air to it, it wouldn't hurt, unless, unless you got something with a lot of chlorox in it, a lot of dishwashing detergent. And you get that all at one big boom, two thousand gallons at one time, and when it gets to that plant and it hits it at one time, it's a culture shock on your bugs.
Yeah, the bacterias.
You know, so when you go into your anaerobic chamber and then post anaerobic, sort of hurts in bugs and then you throw it in the air chamber.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes them grow, but they, they bust, that's what it really does, grow some supplies, they, they multiply supplies and that, I guess, yeah. But chlorox is rough on it, that's why your septic is, is a lot of chlorox, a lot of bath water, detergents, it ain't working, that's why you have to.
The bathroom, the, the, like you're a point, I mean, it's full of stuff, I mean.
Whatever you get in, when somebody throws fifty gallon of gas in it, you get that, if they throw a beach towel and a beer bottle, they suck it up in that truck, it goes in.
It goes in there. So that's a, you're looking at a, a four inch suction, sucking in.
We've got blankets come out of it.
Yeah.
That went in.
That, that, that bag of shirts and everything in that.
Oh, yeah.
T-shirt, t-shirts, worst than.
Well, it's just like, then I look at it and all he pumped that was one, one quarter john and there's a worse cloth and powder wear in it. I mean, you, it's, you, you.
Some of it's, it's gonna be a lot more now.
Oh, yes, and whenever they get to the forest servers and pump them out there that holds thirty-five, or about seven thousand gallons.
One seven thousand, rest on two thousand.
And, and two thousand, uh, you're liable to be getting a, a, a full dress clothes and not know it.
Yeah. Or die.
Right, and, but we need to, I think we, the board needs to say yay or nay on this. And they need to get back with the county and tell them, uh, y'all made up my.
Well, they're open now, we just don't tell them nothing.
Oh, they are taking it now?
They got no choice.
So Dave and Ross can go out there and.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, yeah.
All right.
Sounds good to me.
And we're permitted to take you to back at our point, see what.
Right.
We have been for two months, they know that.
All right, uh, maybe one, one is that meeting that you were talking about that, uh, you take online and, but we'd have to share that.
Yeah, like me and Teresa, well, me and Teresa definitely, it's, um, the local agency type, they're gonna do a webinar and we're gonna, uh, Becky's gonna, she's gotta get set it, she's gotta do it too, cause she's financed to it and then have it, and what we'll do is split it, but we can have it like over at the EMS.
But instead of having to go to Asheville.
Instead of having to go to Asheville for it.
We don't have to do it, no.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have to.
We don't have to.
No, the board members.
The board on that other.
Yeah.
The tourism, yeah, well, you don't have, the board doesn't have to, uh, Steve's gonna have to, but me and Teresa definitely have to.
Becky keeping us there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, uh, instead of a hundred and twenty-five, we're gonna hike it, so.
Okay, that's good.
Sixty cents all the way, so.
There we go.
All right, uh, Angela, Angela Cardwell, Waterville?
Angela Cardwell, I'm here, stay here so we don't know.
About Donna Cody's reimbursement.
Where she, she's wanting, where she had to pay her water, she was fixing to get it disconnected, she had to pay the full amount. It didn't, she had had a leak prior to it, but Cherry had asked her to bring in the documentation and she never did till it was getting full. So we had to, we went back and credited her account over amount of the leak like we always do.
Yeah.
She don't want that, she wants her cash, so.
And in order to, we can give cash, we have to write a, a check out of general.
You have to write a check back out of the water and sewer stuff, it's not, it's not a good practice, I guess you could say, because it misses at the counter breakers, just because it has to come off of the revenue, it would be two twenty-six.
Just give her a leak credit, I mean, give her a credit.
We'll give her a leak credit.
We've already done that.
She wants her money.
So, so.
She wants her cash, she wants the two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Even though she got a bill.
Even though it's a credit, she don't want it a credit, she wants her money.
And she won't be eligible for no leak credits in it.
No, she, no, she got, we give her her leak credit and her account is credited for two twenty-six.
But she hasn't paid the whole bill with it.
She want, she don't want that credit on her account, she wants the money.
Get it straightened out?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Bye now. Uh, she wants us to reimburse her in cash, cause she has paid it.
Well, we just give her a leak credit.
Well, we give her.
What are we reimbursing?
She wants this money instead of her account credited. I mean, she is, if y'all give her the leak credit, which we did, her account is credited for two hundred and twenty-six dollars. She wants that to go off of there, since she already had to pray, pay, because she didn't have the credit at the time, she had to pay to keep her water on.
Right, right.
She wants her money.
So she has to pay.
She, let's say her bill was five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And it hadn't, didn't have a credit issue, but because she had to pay the full amount because her, her water was being disconnected that day.
Yeah.
And the credit she hadn't brought in.
So she didn't get the leak credit in in time is what you're saying.
Right.
She missed it.
But you just give it to her anyway.
Yeah, well, we have give it to her since then.
Yeah, since, so, so.
So she didn't give it in time.
Where is she, no.
She still hadn't used leak credit.
She still.
She got a leak credit and her account is credited, but she don't want her account credited.
Since she got that in late, she'll just have a balance, a credit balance then for next payment, next bill.
Yeah, she's got it, but she don't want it like that.
That's what it's gonna be, my opinion, and she didn't get it in time.
Now, she was asked for it about two months previously. No, she was asked for it about two months previously. It was about a month and a half. She, she said she had a leak, she was asked for the stuff, she wasn't giving the credit and it's two twenty-six fifty-three.
What she said for some, she said for some reason why she didn't bring it?
No, she just said she didn't.
She said she dropped it in the box or something, didn't she?
No, she just said she didn't get around to it.
Well.
That's what she said.
We just give her that credit for her next bill. And we have the books.
I saw a will.
I mean, it, it.
Yeah, it, it's exciting.
And that's how it is, and that's how we normally do it. But I mean, it's the same result if she doesn't own it that way.
What do you think?
I think we should pour a meter.
I think that she's just lucky that she's gonna have next month's bill that paid for it.
It is. She does have credit.
They got the credit.
She has that amount on her bill, has a credit.
Well, it's, uh, she's lucky then, a lot of people don't have that, so.
So lady does, uh, 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 credit, uh, uh, has a, has a overpayment, but it's, she's in a negative, you still thought.
Yeah.
It, it's not gonna take that long to.
No.
No. You got three meters, don't you?
Three different majors, yeah.
That's what I say, yes.
What, what, what meter do we create here?
We're tablet.
Was all three of them?
No, it's just one account, I don't know which one it was.
We're gonna need to go on, we're gonna get them.
We're tablet, we're tablet.
Tablet?
Yeah.
If we get time, we might come back to it.
I understand that one.
Okay. And that, and, and we, we took care of that town and county hazard contract.
Yeah. We don't, we don't have to worry about that.
They helped, they helped.
You ready for Teresa then?
Yeah.
And, uh, oh, I, I spoke with, uh, with, uh, Mike Worsak. And he was waiting on, uh, two pieces, those two pieces of paper that wasn't filled out in that contract. To, to this be signed for Ford Street. And he was waiting on two more, two more phone calls, he'd already made contact with them and they was gonna call him back to double check. And he's, he was in Andrews all day yesterday on business over there. And there was no way he can get back to Asheville and receive those, and they know do it the nineteenth. With awarding the contract, if everything is kosher with the low bidder, it will be.
That'll be our next one.
The nineteenth, and that'll be our second public hearing also. And, uh, and we'll also have to adopt the nineteenth. We'll have to adopt the fifth, uh, public hearing, which no one attended.
And it's not on Ford Street.
And not on Ford Street, but on, on the, on the main, yeah. And also, uh, we, we'll adopt the.
We've got another CDBG grant that we're planning for, uh, which is coming up Chill River, ending up this part of town.
Long Creek.
Taking care of the, all the rest of the sewer lines. Same, same, same project we were trying to do on Ford Street, we're planning some months. While we're having the public meetings.
That's one of the clean the water up here.
That's the one that we're putting water in here in Ford Street most of the.
Okay, here's what it did, here's what it was with Donna. And then I can say right here's where she had the two cred, the two, the two big leaks, she did have a leak. Well, then it went back down. She had two months in there to get the documentation that she did it. Well, then, right here's where we were gonna pull the meter, if it, because, uh, she was behind.
Yeah.
Well, she come in and paid that amount on her bill and then she was issued the credits for the bills and then she wants this amount that she was credited back because she had to pay the full amount to keep it on.
What month was that important?
Let's give it to her. Yeah, just give it to her.
That's two credits we gave her.
Yeah, two leak credits.
She got her credits, yes.
But what she's saying is she's.
So she has no more credit?
No more credit for this third year.
No, it's, she has no more credit, but the.
I know, but we.
She's wanting it back, she's, she has a bigger leak next time, you know what I mean?
She don't have any credit.
She won't have no leak credit.
That's what I mean, she, she's wanting that back, so she doesn't have the leak credit.
Alright, I say we go ahead.
No, wait a minute, no, 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 she ain't wanting it back, she doesn't get any money, she's wanting her, she's wanting her cash.
She's wanting the, the overpaying.
Overpaid.
Yeah.
Since the leak credit.
Right now, she gets behind again, she's got that credit.
Right.
But, but if she didn't have that credit, she gets behind and you turn it down. I mean, she's just a.
She has no credit, it's the, the, the.
She won't get another.
But she won't have it.
That's what she's, she wanted money back, so she will have the leak credit.
No, she won't have a leak credit, no.
She never had the leak credit.
Le, leak credit, no, she wants her money back, cause she had to pay the full five hundred before she got the credit.
She didn't bring her bill in in time to get them to take it out.
But now the next time you turn water off, ain't nothing hard to have, she's, she'll have to pay it or it's turned off.
Right.
I say give it to her.
But, then I'll do it in the twenty-fifth run of bills, because it's, they have to get it.
That's, that's fine.
The only reason I say the twenty-fifth.
Understanding she needs to know.
Does it run more?
Cause she's behind again. For water turned off for a year.
That's.
Leak credits.
That's right.
Long she understands that.
But, yeah, this is just two.
That's right.
The big, the amount. That she say technically overpaid because she cut the credit.
She over, that's overput?
Give it back to her.
Technically.
Yeah.
But, it'd take that long till, uh, get it straightened out with the system, because it's gonna totally screw it up. On the sale account, so.
Yeah. Uh, some new business too, we need to adopt, uh, uh, okay, uh, for us, uh, going to this, uh, software, uh, conference.
Make a motion that we do?
Sure.
Uh, you may have missed me.
That's the Southern.
Wait, you back?
Yes, Southern Software. FMS.
Alright, Teresa.
I can wait till you guys adjourn.
Oh, okay.
I think, come at once.
I don't recognize.
Yours is stuff, yours is stuff, huh?
What, what kind of festival we put now?
That's what the stuff is. You tell me, I'll do it.
Well.
I can't mess around. I noticed on Facebook, they're having a beer festival somewhere down in Georgia. No, we're not having a beer festival.
And all these, uh.
What part of Georgia did you say that?
And all these big bands is coming, you know?
Yes.
Lisa, uh, Lisa's similar, the wonderful handiwork that Teresa is doing. Four, no, it's not, it's not fully completed, but that, I mean, it's something that Robbinsville hasn't lacked.
Is this a product of the, uh, meeting that y'all had back in January, it was wonderful.
I mean, no time it doesn't on purpose, it doesn't on purpose.
Well, uh.
Are you adjourned anymore?
Uh, I don't.
No, you can't.
Jackie, Jackie, she's, I'm sure, well, or nothing else, just you, Teresa.
I don't have nothing else that I know of. Oh, by the way, let y'all know, there's still, we still don't have a signal.
We keep, we keep.
For the water container.
Up here or up here?
Up here, uh, they're working only.
Well, no, we're chatting adjourned yet either.
Uh, but, uh, they don't have it.
No, we need you at least. I don't like to be on camera. I look bad. Don't put me on camera, please.
Shut up.
I put it on me, I don't care.
Who's that?
Me and Jackie don't care.
That guy gets it back to Jackie's head every week. I see he started combing it differently.
Part of our job right here.
Yeah.
Okay, I only got the counting stuff for the wifi in the middle of the month, so, but I kinda wanna start keeping it to see where people are coming from, so. This is it so far, I just put it down. Look at, I mean, look how many people we have from out of town already. I find they are intriguing.
Sixty-one hits, is that what you're looking at, or?
Yeah, sixty-one hit, but see.
Seventeen, seventeen zip codes.
Yeah, it was hard to tell honestly, the counting is hard.
Yeah.
But there's, uh, yeah, a bunch of.
Cherokee, no.
Rhode Island.
Pennsylvania and Texas.
This is like not really greatly tabulated, like, since this is where, the best I could do, but anyway, I thought it was interesting.
Definitely is.
Since February thirteenth, hey, that's pretty doggone good, ain't it?
Yeah, so it is.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I, I don't know where the, I'm trying to find the rest of the data, so, anyway, before, but anyway, we got it now and I'm gonna try to start keeping track, so in the future, we can advertise, pinpoint advertising data to do something for when people are coming. So I'm really kind of excited about it, thank you.
Interesting, I mean, that Cherokee and Clay County and Jackson and Swine, you think they're checking us out, really, see what we're doing? And do we need to check them out too and see what they're doing lately?
Well, these are the people who hit the wifi, that means they connected in town.
Oh, that's interesting.
These were the people, yeah. So I don't know though, if these were people who were here for the wrestling tournament, right?
Well, I would like to, Michigan and.
Right, not all of them.
Other counties, there may have been a few of them, but.
Yeah, so anyway, I thought it was just interesting.
The, the wifi that's like what, on the bypass, is that?
He was three sites.
Three sites, yeah.
So, they're getting hit and I thought probably it was gonna be mostly Robbinsville hits, but, um, no. And then some of them were undetermined, so that's aggravating.
Undetermined.
Well, they put some.
They did, yeah, they did.
Yeah, they didn't put the right thing. Okay, second, okay, the clogging thing is next.
Alright.
Is it so, people came who say they're gonna come, we've already got.
Lobby's best, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Lobby being, he got surgery.
Hey, what am I doing?
She's got surgery, man.
And that's wrong with his face though.
Clogging.
Yeah, I clog.
And then the Isle of Graham County brochure, they won at an article. And last year I did it because the tourism person wasn't here for the, the town, but they just, I mean, for the county, but they just sent it to me again and said, this is the article, unless you find something wrong with it, that's going to the Isle of Graham County brochure.
Sounds good.
Thank you, and where are we today? I'm trying to be succinct here. Uh, the electronic sign.
Mm-hmm. Uh, well, we've got the pipe stubbed up and I, we was gonna do it Monday and, and the weather.
Was bad.
And all, and just as soon as it gets dry, I have to, or we can run that little backhoe in there and dig the detail. Uh, bomb corners end up where we connect to and what just connect to our sign and that way we can do it. And also, I've had about seven different people wanting to know if they could get advertisement on that.
And we are gonna have to make a decision.
And we need to make a decision, how much, we don't add, how much is that gonna cost to run an ad?
I'll tell you what, let's give, let's give them a good deal this first, I'm gonna tell you to get them to use that thing.
That's what they, anybody usually does when you sign up for your thing.
Yeah, yeah.
They give you a kind of a discount.
Yeah.
If you did, so, um, I, I guess, I haven't checked to see if other municipalities do that, I guess what you'd check to see.
Uh, you might have called, uh, the, the, uh, Curtis Lady, that's the mayor of Andrews. Or not Curtis, uh, Chris, Ralph Chris, he's gonna sign down there.
Ralph Chris is in the, was he?
No, uh, but tell Andrews to go sign, electronic sign also. But, uh, Ralph Chris got that, uh, readily signed.
Yeah.
And every now and then he'll put a advertisement on, you might could check with him, see what he charges.
Well, we'll work on that, we'll, we'll get some, but I really want the sign working, if we can get it, uh, he'll climb.
Yeah, that's, uh, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Well, that'll be, we, we, we'll have it working in the week.
When's the first day of spring?
And then we get some weather.
Twentieth.
Boston. Really.
It's twentieth.
When is the first day of spring?
Twentieth.
Twentieth?
That is the day, I'd really like to have it.
Yes.
Because then I go, I start it out, welcome to spring and let's go.
Oh, that is wonderful. Where is the moonshine, or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Okay.
On that.
On down.
That's what they still call it.
They still call it, oh, okay, I mean, I didn't know they called it that, I just.
That branch, you got a name to, what do they call that?
I don't know, I'll put it in there if you can think of it.
And, uh, also, also, uh, Saturday.
Hellbender's one, but I thought that's twenty-eight.
It's something moonshine.
Going to Birchfield and all them was at the museum.
How did they go?
Well, there were several there, I think that, uh, that, uh, uh, the parking lot was slammed full of people.
Yeah, yeah.
And all.
Would the moonshine was down there?
No, well, uh, Gomer, you know, he's got his own little, old film or.
Jan still is managing.
Uh.
Man.
No.
She's not.
No.
She's just riding me, cause where you going?
Who's that?
You.
Oh, shit.
Not Jan Rogers.
Not Jan Rogers, not me.
And, and probably, I need to ask you a question about helium tank, anyway, when this is.
Is she still living that house?
Okay.
I know.
I know, I need not have.
Call me.
What's it Nick helped do?
Well, I'll handle that, the problem was, there's no helium.
Well, all we got to do, they run wife to wake, they run twice a week and we can get a helium bottle delivered.
It's not that I can send it back, it's just, anyway, just, yeah.
But you just get that and then you keep it as long as you want to, and then whenever it runs out, you pay to have it filled back in.
The problem was getting, there's never been any.
Been any in it.
Well, we'll just get something, we'll just have to get a brand of water and swap it.
See, and this is why I needed to talk to you to make sure, because. No, well, we need to double check.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, you, you know, you don't just stick it on there and turn it off, you know that.
You gotta.
And it ain't work.
Do they, that little, that little rubber neck don't?
I used to have a flower shop, I did live balloons forever, but we need to check.
All we gotta do is put a gauge on it.
All you have to do is call it, call it a flower shop and see when that guy's gonna come.
Well, it's not that so much as, is it have helium, does it have helium?
You should check it.
Yeah.
You'll check it.
Did you mount it?
No.
That's what you need, do this kind of flower shop and see when that guy's gonna be here.
He's here two days a week.
Okay. Well, I need to get him to come by.
I think Mondays and Thursdays.
Okay, so I gave you this calendar again, but this time I highlighted stuff, so you could get a better idea. So the, the classified stuff is stuff I'm either, I've got a booth at or I'm helping with or something. And the bold stuff is stuff that I'm planning or doing or like. I'm majorly involved in.
Well, now, I do know that anytime you do need help, uh. So you just, just let me, just let me know, I, I'll, I'll bear it.
Yeah, well, today I need help, so.
Oh, no.
I have, I have to get this calendar to the Graham, the Olive Graham County thing. I've got to get it. And we've got to get it to the printer, so we have got to decide what to do.
Is it this right here or the calendar this right here?
Uh, I'll say this right.
Two thousand fourteen thing?
Yeah, at least here, you run these off, okay?
Run them, go ahead, we go with it.
But that's the one that's not highlighted.
So in, in fact, we just wanna go through them and see what we're gonna try.
Well, really, I guess.
Really, everything is, is known to us.
Well, what we're gonna involve is stuff that's down and already done. Okay, I'm just trying to be all, okay, look at where it says town to be scheduled on the back page and, okay. So these are the things we have to decide. If we're gonna have another event, which would mean is it gonna be and when month? I don't really care, I'll do anything.
I thought we were gonna have the duck race with the wild meat.
Well, are we gonna still do that, are we gonna change the festival?
You don't get the crate in the file?
Well, fail last time, I might as well brought Jackie, had to get his.
He's got, he's got a angel and three gribbles.
We just need to decide what, I don't care what kind of festival we have, I can put on.
Yeah, they do.
A jelly bean festival.
All right, I like jelly bean.
But we've got to, we've got to decide.
Those duck rides, it's fun.
I know, that's, everybody likes that.
Okay, so the duck race is definitely, it's just when, when to do it and um.
You can make a lot more money during the Fourth of July.
I started saying.
Oh, that's terrible. If we have plenty of volunteers, our board dwindled down to three.
Our board is dwindling.
Losing folks, dropping left fly. We, it's gonna be a short lean year this year, buddy, on volunteers.
Yeah.
People tired and so it's wore out, we got stuff at home, people tired.
Well, what are we gonna do?
We've got to do the duck race for.
We're gonna do the taste of the meat too, someone.
What don't we do, what don't we combine that with the uh, with the uh.
Labor Day?
Yeah, I just think it's something maybe like. Holiday festival we do, hometown holidays and.
Well, we don't have any music, we have music on Labor Day, don't we?
Or, or we could do.
On Friday of Labor Day.
But hometown holidays is.
We is, we have been, okay, we've been having hometown holidays, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, but now the chamber's folded, so Winter Fest is folded. And um.
It'd be too cold, we didn't have a duck race.
So then we've combined, right? I mean, I don't know if we're gonna combine it. We gotta decide what to do about winter, that's probably one of the major things. What are we gonna do about Winter Fest, the parade and the festival of trees and Bobby, I need to tell you. We've been doing it on the second Saturday and I talked to Andrews and their parade event is on first Saturday. Cause we talked about moving it, but Thursday's on the first Saturday, so I don't know if you wanna compete with Andrews or not.
I don't want.
I don't see why not.
I don't either.
I mean, Thursday's on the first and ours on the second.
The second Saturday.
Yeah. Why don't we do the, the hometown holidays and the parade on the same day?
It's fine with me, it's just what day are we gonna do it? Are we gonna do it the second Saturday? Are we gonna do it the Saturday before Thanksgiving? Are we gonna do it this?
The mayor of Andrews called me and, and said that if we would do it opposite week. Uh, they would, they'd have, they could, she could assure me that we could get some of Andrews' floats to come over here and, and, and participate in a Robbinsville parade.
We had a good parade without.
Mm-hmm. I, I know that, but I mean, I just, I mean, one, one thing, you know, she said.
That's a good idea though.
Have to speak some more.
That's awful nice of her, dude.
But a wildcat might get egg coming down.
Well, and we have to make the decision, are we gonna pick up the parade since the chamber folded? I mean.
If we don't, it's gonna die.
But yeah, it, and, and we, we as a board, I mean.
I think we would try to do the parade. I mean, the kids love it.
They love it, absolutely love it.
You know, one, one thing, one thing, if we, if we did do the parade and, and hometown holiday on the same day, like Manny said, the, it's gonna be crowded.
Yeah, they have, people are. It'd be crowded, but we'll have to go down to one float, you gotta have. One float. The town wouldn't be able to do a float cause we use our float.
Sure.
For the hometown holiday.
And that'd be all right.
That'd be fine.
That'd be all right. But, but one thing we could do.
But we always have Santa Claus now.
Yeah, Santa Claus always.
We'll put him on the tractor, if we do the parade, we can do Santa Claus on, on.
Four wheeler.
Uh, whatever.
Motorcycle.
Whatever. But, but we could use the middle lane in the, this inside lane on this side of the bypass, leave the parade lane open. I think we'd get a bigger turnout on, on some of the booths.
You have more.
And people buying stuff.
Come out for the parade.
I think people would buy stuff if, if the vendors were set up. I mean, it.
Okay.
Same day, sounds good.
We're gonna do.
It wouldn't be that hard to do.
The parade and.
There's something we might wanna do on parade now.
Hometown holiday same day?
What do you think about a safety hazard? I mean, as far as kids.
For what?
You know, parade would be at night. The bypass will be full of young.
Well.
It'll be that evening, right? The evening, like, sort of starting to get dark. Trees will be lit out.
We did the tree lighting at night, at uh, eight.
Get down the road, come in the morning.
Tree lighting.
Throw it at God.
We have every man we got and everybody got us a vest and.
We're gonna take it as a flag and thing anyway.
And, 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 and part of the march, you know, we could, we could over on the other side.
You could always do the tree lighting with your man, yeah. That'd be good to have the tree lighting before, cause a lot of people don't, it's so cold by the time we light our tree.
Do you, do you think that would help the bit in the summers though? I mean, and the vendors with all the people out?
I don't see why not.
I think we're gonna have to schedule wise. Because um, well, just because, like, the, the tree lighting's gonna be important, I think. But do you do it before the parade or do you do it after? I, I almost think I have.
I, I, I think, I think you would have more attending, you'd have enough, we want to see the, the lights light up, they would stay longer.
What time is the parade, Bobby?
It'd be like six thirty, six or six thirty.
Well, we could have the, the, the parade last one hour.
Oh, it might spend an hour, alright, yeah.
And then you might as well say.
You'd say that after, it's after the parade.
But anybody that was in the parade.
Don't you mean it's after the parade to give everybody that's in the parade?
And that way they could mill around and look at these and stuff like that until they're waiting on the, the lighting.
I think it's so cold.
If you say it's six thirty, I mean, the parade might not be able to stand the clock, you know, you'd be. Trees and parades.
I don't know what time it gets to.
We might be, be creating a cluster down there too. There's gonna be people leaving, they couldn't shut the whole bypass down, I believe that one line up.
Yeah, well, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
We get them out for the parade, well then, they're gonna be there for the tree lighting too.
Yeah.
Hope it ain't cold.
Well, that's one reason about the tree lighting, I was like, nobody will come if, cause they won't give up their place for the parade. I wouldn't give up my place.
I've said it my bit, I agree.
My question to this too on safety purposes, would it be a good idea to talk with Larry Henry, him being up to the EMS? Whenever we have something like that right there, have a, have a ambulance there instead of having to come through the parade and everything heavy.
Always got three.
You would have to have, you would have to have your hometown holiday.
Yeah, they're, they're there by parade time.
He'll fancy and.
You gotta have everything lighted up after dark.
Yeah.
You gotta have lots.
But we need to give, expect to get something to do.
I meant them, we'll say we always put them in a row, then big a lot. We'll be able to do that.
Yeah, we can move them over.
Yeah, they'd move.
Yeah, they're movable. We can set them up in different places, you can turn that head on it.
Okay.
God, thank now, we'll just, we might be a big cluster here. There's gonna be a lot of congestion out there in one of the spots.
Well, uh, at this point, I don't have to necessarily know all the details, I just have to.
We're gonna do it.
Do the day, right, so um, even if we had hometown holiday in the afternoon and the parade at night, at, at least it's the same day. I don't have to come up with a schedule on this second.
So you think we might all just close the road like we usually do? But, well, you know, hometown holiday usually lasts just pretty long.
We use it, what was it, six to nine?
Six to eight and then we light the tree. But a lot of people said we should start in the afternoon and have it, and so I think that that's right, we'll start in the afternoon and then run it until. The tree lighting is what I would say.
I think, I think that's very good.
When the baby gonna leave, we'll get ready for break.
Yeah, that's the question.
They need an hour, well, you need an hour, well, you need at least thirty to forty-five minutes minimum before.
Well, everybody be getting a float ready and.
Yeah, is, is it gonna be a bad day to do it? That's the other.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll get it all one day.
You think the baby sitting in the floats and all this stuff, like Angel, that fits on, gonna come to hometown holiday?
Oh, they'll have plenty of time come for that, won't they?
What, when does it start?
Six. The hometown holiday, when you gonna start it? We used to do it six to eight.
Uh, I think now it'll probably start, I don't know, three, I don't know, one, three, something.
Starting three o'clock, I don't know.
Pretty big it.
Three to five and straight to six.
Them other people's gonna be out anyway.
And the tree lighting at eight.
Yeah.
You want, you wanna get, no, or that would work.
Somehow, somehow I wanna.
Vendors on the street till, till after the parade is gone, but that's when they're gonna have most people, most people gonna be gathered down there.
There'd be a lot of people if we keep, if we do it like that. We have both of them at home, so all three.
So are we gonna have enough volunteers to pull off three thing, I mean, two, I guess.
The parade is mostly, I mean, mostly just one person.
You get the rescue squad to hear that one too.
Get Joe, one that has line of luck all the time. Okay, get them lined up for the big.
We'll have to, I think we definitely have some help. We need help anyway, but until we add this stuff, it's gonna be.
But after your hometown holiday is started, we can keep our boards on the street for traffic control.
Right.
Some make your deputy cars and turn lights on, next thing. And then.
So we have that.
We'll have the parade lined up.
Might be the un-cable man on his foot.
Now, it, it, no.
Now the day, the Saturday before Thanksgiving or the second Saturday like the parade's always been?
Keep it just like the parade's always been.
Second Saturday. Do you want me to call it Winter Fest, the way the chamber did, which has been the tradition, or move it to hometown holiday, which is what we've had for the last two years? I don't care, either one is fine.
How about combination than hometown holiday?
Winter Fest and it, it's hometown holiday.
Hometown holiday.
So much work John and them bro did in Winter Fest, they done good.
Everyone's welcome to them.
Get tired.
Yeah, I mean, really they do.
Winter Fest, hometown holiday and parade.
Okay, the last thing is the festival of trees. John said of the three, that was the easiest to do, but I don't know that it would be the easiest for me.
Well, what you need on it, just somebody sets the trees up.
No, they did that, don't they?
They, they now, they're, they're gonna go, the chamber's gone.
Yeah, but the chamber.
The chamber did.
Chamber did do it.
The people brought the trees, but the chamber put them up and managed on the scent. Leon did it one year.
The chamber just put up the uh, outside thing and set it up for the trees to be, the people came and did their own trees and stuff, you know, that you just had to set up the area and then set up for the voting, you know?
And if they blew over and.
Well, now we, we, we came over, if our tree was down, we came over and picked it up, I mean, that's. Unless it became a mess and somebody saw it, I mean, that was the only reason, but.
So I say forget that.
Me too.
So that tell we get.
If we're doing a winter fest, if we're doing a winter fest.
Last time, maybe we had six. The first time had, the first time had some good ones, this time it didn't seem to have as many.
Somebody else pick out.
Okay.
Lot of our place.
Yes, heavens, yes.
I agree, I'd rather the parade than the trees. If you're gonna have to pick, yeah. It's just my personal opinion.
Okay, um.
Dan never voted for trees, nobody did you. I never helped either. Steve ain't, Bobby ain't never voted for trees.
So the tourism goes or stuff, I have it on our book, I have to work on anyway, so that's just. These tourism goes are stuff I have to work on anyway, or am doing, or.
Let's see what they are.
They, it's stuff that's happening, so. The last question then for this is for my activities and stuff, we're gonna have another event, when is it gonna be? Or are we gonna do Taste of the Wild with hometown holiday, Bobby, like you suggested, which I don't think is necessarily a bad idea.
And we've got to fish, and it's next thing for us, isn't it?
If we got to.
Or just don't do it, I mean, I, I'm not tied to it, I don't let.
I'm tied to it, I think it's gonna grow.
I think we could.
I believe, yeah.
Like Taste of the Wild, the wild meat festival.
Yeah, we gotta keep both.
I think it's gonna grow. I had a lot of people this year, so man, you just done it wrong time, it's during hunt, I said.
Let's do it earlier and, and put the duck race in there with it.
Do Taste of the Wild.
You're gonna make me know another hall. I'm not gonna get a single holiday with, with. Or do we do it in December when hunting season's?
No, it's too cold.
Some duck race, I'm talking about Taste of the Wild.
Oh, it'd be too cold then.
Well, one thing about it, in December you can get plenty of meat.
Yeah.
Everybody's got their meat for the last one time.
When's hunting season?
It closes. Jan, we need to do it during deer season, if we're gonna do it thing when, when hogging, bear season's shut down, nobody eat dog in, or not that many deer hunters.
When is that?
It closes.
Deer, deer hunting season opens uh, the week before Thanksgiving, don't it?
Yes, week before.
Week before Thanksgiving and that runs for three, three weeks.
That must be pretty warm weather in our deer nut month.
Is bear season in August too?
No.
No, uh-uh.
Any season in August?
It's in, it's in December and January, December, January, bear.
I know where it get a lot of turkeys.
You laid me out on that.
Me too. Mills should kill us.
Well, you, you know, if you can, a day, a day you could do the duck race and, and the Taste of the Wild, I mean, that would be a.
That ties it together.
Whether in March.